We're going to call April 16, 2019 meeting of the Bucksport Land Board of Order. Roll call.
Stephen Bishop.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Here.
David Grant.
Present.
Steve Feis, absent. Edward Belcher.
Here.
George Hansen.
Here.
Jay DeRozan.
Here.
Review and acceptance of minutes from the April 2, 2019 meeting.
So I would second that with one slight addition to that. The attendance box under my name is not marked.
I saw that, yeah.
Other than that, I would second that motion that they've approved this guy.
A few minutes later or something.
No?
No, really no.
This is an error on my part.
No.
That's it.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Chair report, there is none. Code enforcement officers report.
All I have this evening to report to you is I received a letter last week from DEP indicating that they've approved of the most recent amendment to Appendix K land use ordinance that involved numerous changes to the resource protection district. So we are in the process of updating our zoning map now to get that on our website and move forward from there. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
At this time, I'll open the limited public forum, which is an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. Not on the agenda for this evening. Anyone like to come up? Seeing none, I'll close the limited public forum. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, an application for approval of proposed on-site parking area for an existing building previously served by offsite parking. Occupancy of the building to continue as an educational training facility under new ownership, tax map one, lot 10-4. The applicant is Maine Maritime Academy.
I just have a little introductory presentation for you to explain what this is all about. So this, I apologize for the map being on its side like that. My scanner sometimes does that. What I'm showing here, outlined in orange, is the lot to be purchased by MMA. It's not yet purchased. There's a purchase and sale contract on it, and you have in your package an authorization from the owner of that lot for MMA to go through the process prior to closing the property. The property is in the industry development district, with maybe a little sliver at the bottom here in the shoreline portion. But the site that, part of the lot's being developed is in the, outside shoreline zoning. Oops. So it's hard to read there showing much of that, but I'll see if I can load it up a little bit for you. In the industry development district, schools are allowed. Now, this is a recent amendment we made, the one I just mentioned about being approved through DEP, to identify all types of educational facilities under the one heading "schools." And as you note, in the industry development district, we've changed that from a prohibited use to now some allowed use. There's a note here, C1, that describes a limitation. And the limitation is that the land use is limited to schools that offer training and education to meet licensing or certification prerequisites, schools that offer specialized training, and schools that offer post-secondary education. This application falls under that category, I think you'd agree. I visited the site yesterday and took a couple of short videos, which I'll show you, to try to give you an idea. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site anyway, but this is the building we're talking about right here.
Mm-hmm.
And this area, which you can see through the trees, is where one parking lot was going to be built in this area.
Lower.
And the next video is just another view. This is from the main entry gate. One road going out to the left here, which will access to lower parking lot, and this road to the right accesses the upper parking lot, which is currently being used partly. And then I have just a still shot of the building, which I know you all are familiar So the, when I received the application, I sent it out to department directors, and I received comments from all the directors. There were no concerns expressed on this application. I also notified the butters, which weren't very many. The butters are those who share a property line or are within 100 feet of the boundaries of the lot. So that was pretty much Bucksport Mills, Bucksport Generation, and Maine Central Railroad. And received no comments from any of them. So you have, the application was sent out to you in the mail about a week or so ago. Hopefully, we've had a chance to take a good look at it. And we have Attorney William Fletcher here this evening to represent the applicant, and I'm sure he'll be able to answer any questions you might have. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any presentation?
Good evening. I don't have any specific presentation. I think Jeff has done a good job of providing an overview. I am here tonight with John Stewart of Pliskin Day, who prepared the packet that, or the plan that was in your packet. And so between the two of us, hopefully, we can answer your questions. I would just say that, as Jeff pointed out, this is proposed use and associated parking as it relates to the existing building. And I suspect in the months ahead after the closing, we'll be back before you for some, seeking additional approval relating to some improvements in furtherance of MMA's fire suppression training area. So I will stand by and welcome any questions.
I didn't hand out the normal review form you used because you have draft findings and already there.
This review is already paged. One of the, Ed.
But we've gone through the introductory presentation, applicant speaks, and the next step will be to ask questions. And I don't know if you have any questions of the applicant. If there are none, then you, the next step will be to ask the public for any input.
Ed, you were mentioning something. Does anyone have any questions?
I had one question in regards to the map, and this may be beyond your scope at this particular point in time.
Sure.
But I see on the map that it references an inactive hydrant that's been at the entrance. And I was wondering if that's, has that been inactive, or is that something that is being inactive now, or are there plans? And the reason why I ask is, as the construction goes on and more things happen on that piece of property, now that you are beginning the parking lot, people are going to start to use that. I don't know, do you know what type of infrastructure works and doesn't work underneath the ground there or not?
We've spent a lot of time studying the site itself, including locating underground lines and designating those that are active and inactive. So, and we're still going through that process. We're making a lot of progress as it relates to that, but we're still concluding, you know, which areas have live and inactive lines. So I think most of that work is done as a practical matter. If I can't answer your specific question as it relates to the hydrant, other than to say it is, has been determined to be an inactive hydrant.
So you don't know what's going to stay in or not?
I don't know.
Okay.
John, do you have any input on that?
The, I'm going to point to this if I can see this better. The hydrant you're talking about, is that up my understanding?
Yep.
I think that's been discontinued for a while. There are quite a few pieces of utilities out there that are, have been either stubbed off for various reasons over the years.
Right.
There's actually a series of sewers and other things that are in here that are all inactive that are probably over 50, 60 years old, that have been discontinued for quite a while. So as MMA looks to develop there, they're definitely doing their due diligence to figure out where those things are. We've done our best so far to identify where they are. We've worked with mill staff to pick those things up. If fire safety is a concern, the major pump house for the site is, yep, just a little bit. The fire pump house is right here, and there's active water pressure right there. And there's an easement that goes right, that's going to go right across to the MMA site. So if there were any fire concerns, there are active hydrants that are close by, and like I said, there are numerous other utilities that are.
Right.
That are inactive.
All right, so you guys are going through trying to find out what is and isn't working underneath that.
Yeah.
All right. I see you noted that on there, so I just brought up that question.
There's a 36-inch water line that comes from Silver Lake that's on this property. So there's plenty of water.
There's a lot going on for sure.
That is strictly raw water. That process.
Right.
Correct. It was for papermaking period.
Right.
That didn't have anything to do with fire protection or sanitary water, drinking water.
That's correct.
There are two systems on that site, fire protection and drinking water. They are not supposedly tied together sometimes.
Yeah, we found that to be the case. There are separate systems there. There's the public water system.
No, I worked in there for 10 years.
Oh, so, and then there's the raw water, so you're absolutely right.
And even as this has been coming down, things have been deactivated and stuff as the structures come down too. So in the last couple of years, a lot has changed. Yeah. But pretty much nothing outside the physical boundaries of Route 15, nothing out there's changed at all. So, but most of the, what you're showing for parking areas right now is already paved, so pretty much there's no construction, I believe. Unless you're going to take out some of the railroad tracks.
Is that going to be enough parking spaces for you, or are you going to try to grow later?
You know, that's for the, the current plan is to have the parking, which I think is 59 spaces in total. That'll allow parking for 15 faculty and staff, and I believe about 49 students, I believe this number, I got the number right here. 15 faculty and staff and 40 students is the initial plan.
So is there room to grow there if you need to on that?
And so there's quite a bit of space south of the EDC Training Center itself.
The ordinance requires one space for, per faculty and one space per student minimum.
How much work do you actually propose to do for the parking areas?
I think, just what's shown there, I think there'll be some additional paving work to be done. But that'd be just what's shown on the plan itself.
Which is nothing.
Well, the depiction of the parking areas is where the additional paving work will Just to, just to make those suitable, a suitable parking lot.
I have a copy of that, so I don't know.
You're doing your scanning, at this point, because there's a draft standard that's already prepared for you, and I'm assuming you've all read through that thoroughly, I would suggest to the chair that you ask the board if there are any questions or concerns about any of the language that's been proposed for the standard review. And if none, you could simply move on to your findings.
Do we have any questions or concerns?
I have none.
George?
Uh, no.
Ed?
I did have one stand by. The section that said, when I was talking about solid waste, it said that you guys hadn't planned, there was no plan for any disposal of solid waste in regards to this right now. You know, is there a spot marked out with your plan on putting anything on site for that or not?
In, beyond, you're talking beyond a public sewer system or?
Yeah, no, for a dumpster for the solid waste.
Oh, I see. I see.
And I can see that mapped out and marked out.
Yeah, I don't think they expect anything significant or material to be generated by that facility, just given its nature of inside classroom activities, you know, at that time, at this time. And to the extent that further training facilities are constructed on-site, we'll be back to seek approval, and I suspect there may be some discussion about what the appropriate disposal is.
Okay, so there's no, there aren't going to be any training activities taken out on outside in the parking lots or anything like that?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Sure.
I have a question about the drinking water supply. My understanding is the line that comes from the street is a private line, and it's very old, and that probably is in need of replacement. When MMA takes possession of the property, then my understanding is then the water company has to take ownership of that line. I also am aware that there's been some discussion about how that's going to take place. So is there, has there been an agreement as to how that's going to take place yet?
We're still working through that, as with, as with other items on our due diligence list. But we've had, have been in conversations, conversations with Maine Water Company about taking ownership of that line and having separate metering for each end user, which is what they'll require. So that, that conversation is ongoing, and we're continuing to make progress on it. But that'll certainly be something that we'll need to address prior to closing.
Can you clarify a little bit on?
Sure.
Maine Water taking ownership of that line, or you folks taking ownership of that one?
The portion that they would be taking ownership of would be off of Lot 4.
Okay.
And they would be taking ownership of that and installing meters. So each user would have its own meter. Currently, there's only really historically been one user off that water line.
Okay.
So with other lots being created, there'll need to be separate metering for each of the end users.
You have a lot of details to work out.
A lot of details.
Which would, that would be more of a concern for future requests? I mean, this is, this is basically just for these.
This one?
Two parking areas, right?
No, the education center.
I know, but we're just, we're really just looking at these parking, these parking spots. There's nothing.
At the moment.
I guess I'm asking, I mean, this is, who pays what for city water are the concerns? And we're here to decide whether or not they can put in these parking places, I believe.
Right, and I guess the only reason why I had some of the questions I had is once the parking is there and done, then that enables this building to be used.
Right.
And that's why.
But to get occupancy, water has to be taken care of.
Yeah, I understand that. But they, is that our, that's not our, it's more than just work, I think, right?
Later on down the road, probably.
No.
And that's something they have in their works now.
Well, they, Maine Water would take care of their portion of the offsite to property line. From property line to the building, metering and stuff will be MMA's, their contract. They'll have to get a contractor to install that portion of the water and stuff. And generally, there's a fee, hook-up fee. Well, I know there was with the sewer department, and there may be with water department too, I don't know.
So Mr. Chair, to, just for clarification, you are looking at the site plan, the parking lot is a, it's a new site development. But the applicant also is describing the use of the building, and the permitted use of that building originally was as a training facility for mill employees. The next use is going to be a very similar use, but of a different nature, a different type of educational use. And it would have a slightly different land use impact in that you're going to have people coming and going and vehicles where you wouldn't normally have seen that when the mill employees were going back and forth to the building for training purposes. So there is a, there's a land use issue here too regarding the use of the building as well as the.
But I would think that the building use would be less with 49 people in it versus what the mill had, 1,000 people in the mill.
Just using that front gate? Oh, God. This is not even comparable.
But the, the land use that I think we, is a change, is actually bringing cars on site. The building use isn't changing what, it's actually going to be less than it has, it probably has ever been. But I don't know how the mill ran, you know, what they ran in there, or how often, but.
They had full-time employees and officers in there, and a lot of conference rooms.
So I think the building use itself is going to be less than it's ever been when the mill was, was going full steam.
Oh, yeah.
The only change I see to this whole thing is just putting these 49 parking places in. That's the only land use change I see, but I mean, I could be wrong. It's happened several times today already.
Well, it's how that space is being used differently right now or in the past. It was not used for parking, the upper part, I think, was probably used for parking, but.
Right, but the building itself, the use isn't really changing, it's just changing ownership.
Right, that's, that's what I pointed out. It's still, it's still an educational training facility, but it's going to be used a bit differently than it was when the mill was there.
Well, even where at the lower parking lot that they're proposing, that area was paved, that was the entrance to the building, there were some parking lots along there for the executives.
Right, this lower one?
Yeah.
This was the main walk-in entrance for mill?
It was parking on both sides of the, this was a wide paved area right here below this, where you walked in for mill.
Yeah, it was a little painful.
And they had packing along there too, for, that was that.
Yes, but that was very limited and stuff.
Providing the one that I'm finding.
I hope so.
This was probably the.
You all, you all are satisfied that the applicant has documented compliance with the major standards?
I am, yeah.
Should we hold on that? I'm kind of, so we're going to move?
We'll move on to the findings and facts.
And when you do your findings, you typically take a look at each individual standard and determine if it's applicable or not? In the draft findings, that distinction hasn't been made, so I suggest maybe you do that as you go through it.
You see, you did not have little, you didn't have our standard sheets that we were going to.
I didn't, I didn't include that in the packet because of the draft standards that are, were prepared for you. It's, it's the same, it's the same list of standards that's in there, checklist.
So we'll start with, start with the, do you have a blank, can I have that blank copy that you have right there? Just so I consider. I'll get it back here. So the environment standards. Do you want me to read through them and we'll, we'll just decide whether or not they're applicable or not?
Do you want to just take a blank one, and we'll just run copies off everybody, and we'll just go through it? Do you want to do that?
We can do that.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Do you mind? Rach, do you mind just running some copies off for us?
Yes, sir.
That'd be great.
How many copies do you want? One for each of you?
Yes, one for each of us, just of these standards as we go through.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, just, just again, you do have the exact same standards in front of you now. Under environment, for example, you have the seven, seven standards that are covered under that, that heading. And what you typically do is you take a look at the standards and under the heading and determine which, if any, are applicable.
So under the environment, that, you don't do this that often, so it's just like to see what, what our plan looks like.
Yeah, it's a lot of use too.
So do you want to just go down and start and?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, go ahead, you said.
So I'll ask if anyone thinks soils are applicable?
And that was what my question was to start with, if there's going to be any grading of building in order to get the parking lots built. And it appears that we're just painting parking lots.
A little paving, overlay.
And is that the case then?
Where, so are there new, are there any new areas being paved, or is it just, like I said, overlay?
I think, John, you have, you've been on the ground certainly.
There's a couple of spots where there's some old foundations up here, north of the EDC Center, that might need a little grading, and we're talking like a foot, foot and a half maybe at the most.
So no major.
To kind of regrade, let.
No major excavation.
Nothing significant. I don't believe there's going to be an excavation of foundations at this time. Aiden is bringing everything down to foundations.
Are you not paving down here in this area?
Oh, and down here as well, there'd be some, again, minor grading. That's, that's why on your plans, you can see in red, the red arrows that just show kind of the general direction of the contours. There's really no change in the direction of the waterfall. And the grading is going to be subset of the probably 1% to 2% slopes in those parking areas, with the exception of, there's a little entrance right here, when you come up to the bottom part of the EDC Center, there's a little bit of a rise there to get up there, but the driveways are just going to go up that way.
Is that paved now?
It's, it's, there might be some pavement down there, but I think right now there's a lot, that's where they were piling all the rubble from, from this building when that got demolished. So there's, there's still some layers, I think, that need to be scraped a little bit and graded a little bit, but there's not going to be any significant change in the grade there. And I think I put some on the plane, you can probably read, it's like 19, it's basically about 20 feet in elevation right there. I think it's like 19.5 or something there on the corner. I don't know if we can read that on the other planes. 19.2, 19.8 to 19.2, so you're talking. Nineteen-two, nineteen-eight to nineteen-two, so you're, you're talking three quarters of a foot.
Yep.
And, and change in grade.
So, if you're going to do grading, you're going to either remove pavement and cut it new pavement, won't you?
Right.
You're going to do a little bit of earthwork and then some pavement.
That's my understanding.
And strip it.
So, do we feel soils are something to be concerned about or not applicable?
No.
I, I think they're applicable, but I don't see any issues.
I was saying exactly the same, I think they are applicable, but I don't think it is an issue.
Okay.
We aren't, we aren't looking yet. More than maybe a hundred cubic yards of any type of earthwork.
Okay.
And there might be some little bit of concrete here demolition or something.
So, number, so we'll move on, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Stormwater runoff from the land use is minimized to the greatest practical extent and adequately managed to reduce the risk of relevant detrimental effects.
There's really no change.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
So... What did we say, not applicable or not a concern or not an issue, not concerned about it? If they're going to be grading and adding soil or adding...
Well, he, he just mentioned his, the, the change of the, the change of the runoff. He says it's going to be about three quarters of a foot in the distance and it's going to be, elevation's going to change enough for an adequate water runoff, correct? That's what you were getting to? So, yes, it's applicable, but I don't think it's an issue.
Well, it's going to get along with the existing stormwater system too.
Right, so...
And all of this area is flowing to that catch basin. The upper parking lot, that all flows towards main gate. I don't see any stormwater problems.
Anyone else? Three, soil that may be exposed during any soil disturbance activity of the land use is adequately protected from unreasonable erosion and sedimentation.
I, I think that one's applicable, but they're kind of those best management practices to alleviate any concerns. Upon to the...
Is okay with that one, Ed?
Oh, yeah, because AIM is still going to be working around, on the other problems.
Okay.
There's still work going on other than this little thing.
So, number four, surface and subsurface water adequately protected from the detrimental effects of any water pollution form from the land use?
It's a classroom, you know, what's going to...
It's hard to, it's hard to think of any reason being applicable in that particular site.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
That's why you're flipping back and forth.
I mean, in, in their proposed findings, you know, they find many of these non-applicable, but then I don't want to just fly through it.
Yeah.
If anybody has any issues.
The water runoff right now is pretty much directed to some existing catch spaces and stuff. As long as they do best management practices, put up filters around the catch space and stuff, they're all set.
Okay. Number five, ambient air environment adequately protected from the detrimental effects of air pollution from the land use.
What's that with that?
Is MMA going to be under the same DEP limitations that AIM is under? Noise, dust, and all of that.
What's the, what's the source of that that you're concerned about?
Hmm?
What's the source of the noise and dust that you're concerned about with this post-land use here? It's school.
Well, it's no school yet.
Well, there's going to be some noise and dust during the construction phase for a few days, but other than that, it shouldn't be too bad.
No, it's not, not in the same scope as AIM's demolition and control of that, no, but... Do you, there is no town limitations or anything?
Well, if we're talking about a land use that generated noise or dust, I would say you'd be, want to look at it, but isn't this a not applicable standard for the land use we're talking about? What's the board think?
For, for the school, but obviously there'll be a little dust when they're grading, but, but that's not the entire land use, that's just a little bit of construction prior to the approved land use.
I don't think, I don't think that's applicable.
I'm going to put that one to BMT, best management practices.
Okay. Number six, significant wildlife habitat. Thank you. Vegetation with any applicable shoreline district, within any applicable shoreline district? If not...
I've wrote not applicable.
I would say not applicable.
Right.
Do we need a site visit?
No. Good job with the photos, Jeff.
Special compliance conditions. Can we move on to special areas standards?
So...
Yes. Number one, the prehistoric, the areas of prehistoric are historical importance. Are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use.
Head rule that one, two, five, not applicable.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody?
Second.
Okay. Can we vote on that? Jeff, should we vote on that to move the motion in?
It's the motion, yeah.
All right, yeah, so I'll call in favor. Local area standards? I'll read down through if you want, or...
I'll take a stab at it. Not applicable, not applicable, not applicable. I'd say four is applicable.
Lighting on the building?
Ed was concerned about noise, but the soil is... Can't imagine any odors. There are no solar things.
No.
They've gone block. Smoke and dust.
No.
Some terranian vibration.
To me, the only one that would be considered applicable would be the lighting.
Agreed.
And you, so parking lot lights and building, outside building lights and things.
And the neighbors out that close, where it could be a big issue probably, but...
Is any of that indicated on there? Do you have any, like showing any, I don't see any. Some, some wall packs, I guess, on the building, but anything for the parking areas or?
Street lamps.
I can speak to that. There are some wall packs on the, on the south side of the building that point right, right towards the parking lot. And similarly, there's, there's one up here on the upper level. And I would, I would leave it for whatever's coming next for MMA. You know, depending on how they're going to improve that site further for a more advanced lighting design. Right now, there's no composed changes in the lighting. That, that building is fairly well lit up. There's actually a couple of spots even on the backside of the building that light up, illuminate this area even. So, I, I would say for, for now, it's adequate even at nighttime for that parking area.
So, there's no changes planned right now?
Not right now, no.
So, if the lighting is staying as it's been, would we find any problem with that?
No.
I'm asking, I'm, you know... So, public safety standards? Quality, quality of public and private drinking water supplies, adequately protected, any relevant detrimental effects of the land use?
That's a career, yeah, right?
I mean, the building is, but we're just in the same capacity for, I don't know, we did that building. Holy smoke, I can't remember now. Probably twenty years ago.
So, there's no harm to the water supply, is, is what we're answering.
Agreed.
All right, two, so we'll, not applicable?
No, but they're in discussion to upgrade the existing line.
Correct, but the use of that building as a school is not going to do any harm to the public water supply?
No.
So, would we call that not applicable?
Yeah.
Safety and sufficiency of energy supply services are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use?
I mean, it's some minimal use compared to what that area used to use. And it's, I don't know if you, how it can impact it.
No.
Public safety services are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use?
Well, they get the same entrance as they've always had.
Yeah.
And a heck of a lot less congestion to get to the buildings.
Lot less buildings.
Wastewater facilities are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use? Did the, the mill had its own wastewater treatment, did it not?
Paperless.
Paper, paper process, not, uh...
Ground.
Add into town, should they be called it?
Is it, is it tied into the wastewater treatment?
Yes. Yeah. You look great beyond the plan as a pump station.
Same pump station you pointed out earlier?
Hmm?
The same pump station you pointed out earlier?
It's, it's down in the ravine. Because it's got the pump station building that's right up on the side of the road across the street from the train. That's the diesel generator for it. The sanitary wastewater for the mill and the shower rooms, et cetera, and stuff, are connected to, um, waste treatment. And I'm sure that this building is connected to it.
Okay. Proper management of solid waste is adequately protected, and they've mentioned that... There's no plan to have a dumpster on site now, but... So, when that building's in use, they'll just cop their trash out or bring it to Castine?
I haven't discussed with them what their plan is for solid waste. I suspect if the need arises and they need a dumpster, they'll have one there. They'll certainly take, you know, whatever appropriate steps are necessary to dispose of it. And I suspect in time, depending on how much activities are, that they may need a dumpster on site.
Safety and sufficiency of streets and sidewalks are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use?
Agreed.
The thing I think probably will be needed at some point in time is a stop sign here.
That'd be, where he's pointing to that, the stop sign there, that's, that's beyond your control or beyond the scope of your land at this point in time, right? So, that's, that's across the street. Right, that's on this side, that's on this side of the tracks. Your, your land starts on that side of the tracks, correct?
Okay.
Somebody's got to put a stop sign up here.
Right, yeah, that'll have to be addressed.
That's on the, you, that's...
This is, this is where the entrance starts.
There's never been a stop sign on here.
Well, there's going to be...
There's always been traffic there, so I mean, this, you know...
Well, when, when all is said and done, I mean, there might be so many people in there. Maybe there'll be a light or something, who knows?
I would guess that would fall within DOT's thirty-three feet right away of, of center.
Right, yeah.
And I'm assuming that any stop sign there would be up to them, but...
But yeah, you've, you've got, depending on how many, this, this form of parking cars and...
The volume of traffic in and out of there necessitates that, you need a stop sign up. That would be DOT's, if you want to think, to install one of them.
Agreed. So, you good with the public safety?
All good.
The, the proposed findings has accessibility listed next.
For the purposes of your review, that just applies to the parking lot to ensure that it meets ADA standard. You see on the site plan, there are four. There's two van accessible and two non-van accessible parking spaces.
And is that, is that the proper ratio?
I don't have that, I don't have that figure in my hand, sorry.
Is that the proper ratio for ADA?
I think, I don't recall, but I, I almost think it was one or two. And I just went with four, two on the upper, two on the lower, just to be safe. I, I don't, I don't know what the actual number should be.
So, in the event that you just need to increase, you can easily just make, make one of these spaces. So, if, if it's not ADA compliant, then you can just add one.
Right, and, and the, the two that are on the lower, there's a ramp that exists there, a handicap ramp, and those are right at the end of that ramp.
Okay.
So, they can scoop right up the, scoop right up the side of the building.
Let's see if I can find out real quick. One and twenty. Okay. Yeah, so you...
Thanks.
For the proposed space, you have one extra. Thank you.
Move on to specific use standards?
There is just one specific use standard which we've already talked about, and that is parking spaces. One space per teacher and one space per student. And they're saying that there are forty students total and fifteen faculty members, so it's fifty-five, and that's how many spaces you're showing, right? Fifty-nine?
That's right.
Fifty, you said fifty-five?
Fifty, fifty-nine.
Forty-nine?
Fifty-nine.
Is it fifty-nine or forty-nine?
Fifty-nine. Right now, you're showing fifty-five. Plus four handicap.
Twenty-nine is fifty-five.
Thank you.
Plus four handicap.
I left my batteries in there. Uh, the dimension standards?
Correct.
There's a setback requirement for the parking lots, and that's ten feet from property lines. I think that's being met. And also too, the, the size of the parking spaces, uh, the ordinance requires a ten-foot wide by twenty-foot deep parking space. And I think, is that, is that, uh?
Looks like these are nine by eighteen.
Yeah. And sixteen feet, that one.
The numbers here.
Yeah, I see nine by eighteen.
Yeah, where do you see that?
What is it that requires that they be ten by twenty?
Our land use.
So that will have to be revised?
Do I look over?
Right, yeah, it'll have to be.
Certainly make that change.
Is there enough room there to increase everything by?
Well, about a space and a half on sixteen and a half. About a space on. Space and a half on twelve.
So it adds sixteen feet on the.
Yeah, a space and a half.
Call it the tower and.
The depth of the lot.
Okay, this room. This room.
Yeah, there's definitely.
Good job. I believe that.
Alright. Alright.
So we'll go back.
See, there's any standards of town ordinance.
Yeah. Are you all, are you all set with that? Is there, is there anything you need to calculate real quick, or are, are you, are you gonna be alright with us making that a condition?
I think you make that a condition.
Okay.
That will make sure that they're ten by twenty.
Okay. Alright, that's not gonna affect anything.
As minor.
Okay.
So assuming we'll, we'll make it conditional on meeting that standard, the dimensional standard, we'll go back to. Environmental finding.
Uh, I would motion that the, uh, the objectives have been met.
The proposed land use will have no impact on the environment that's contrary to the purpose of this ordinance?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor? Special area standards, is that it?
Yes. You determined that none of them were applicable, so there's no need to do a finding on that?
Local area standards?
Yes, special area standards were on, none were applicable.
So local, I thought we went through and said none, but you did mention the lighting, but there's no changes, so.
Just some wall packs on the building, do you have a quick?
So your, your finding will be just on that one point?
Can I have a motion? That the proposed land use will have no impact on local areas that, that are contrary to the purpose of this ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? And public safety standards, the only thing that was mentioned was solid waste, I believe, right?
Correct.
Stop sign.
Stop sign.
At some point, they'll have to show, whether they're gonna stick a dumpster or something.
Right. So can we have a motion that the proposed land use will have no impact on public safety that is contrary to the purposes of this ordinance?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Specific use standards?
What'd you skip on? It's not, it's not, I didn't update your checklist, it's accessibility?
Accessibility, so, um. It's not on our sheet, but. I will say the proposed land use will have no impact on accessibility. That's contrary to the purposes of this ordinance. So move.
Second.
All in favor? Now to s- specific use standards. And now, you found that they need parking one per person, staff plus students, um, with the. Required ADA spaces and, uh.
I motion that they have met all applicable specific use standards.
Second.
It increases odds a lot, so.
This would be a.
We'll deal it out with excellent dimensions, right? Uh, all in favor? The dimensional standard? With the caveat that all the parking spots need to be increased to meet our ordinance?
Just an increase from eighteen by nine to twenty by ten, is that correct, Jeff?
Hmm. So can we say that the proposed land use has met all applicable standards in this ordinance as they will revise it, or is that legitimate?
Can we just, just make it a condition, the dimensions of that, the condition pending?
Have a motion.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Based on the conclusions of the planning board as documented above, the proposed land use will not have any impact that is contrary to the purposes of appendix K land use, and therefore, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Ready?
Move on to administrative business?
Uh, there's nothing other administrative business.
Okay. Uh, discussion, you have home-based businesses, medical marijuana production and sales.
Right, I'm bringing this to the planning board for discussion purposes because I had a, um, citizen who's interested in moving into Bucksport. Purchasing a home and operating a medical marijuana growing and, uh, dispensary operation from their home. I looked in the ordinance and really couldn't, uh, find any particular part of the ordinance that allowed that, so I prepared a, a document for you. And I'm gonna go through part of it tonight on the screen, but not all of it, because there's a lot in here. What I'm gonna show you is, is just to refresh you on how our land is, or addresses both medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana right now. And I'll start off by showing you in the table of assembly land uses. We have one reference to retail marijuana social clubs, and you can see across the board, it's prohibited. The question I'm asking here about this one is, um. Is, uh, this, this use really should be deleted from the, the ordinance because it was in the, the Marijuana Legalization Act as a type of activity for the use of marijuana. But it's, it's since it's been removed from the law now, so it's not, it's not a use, social clubs are not allowed under the state law. So I would suggest that at some point in time, we take it out of our, our ordinance. The next, uh, the next table deals with healthcare land uses, and this one is kinda gray. So we've highlighted alternative treatment offices and home-based healthcare services, and when you look at the definition, it kinda suggests that maybe you might be able to include marijuana. In either case here, but it's not clear. And I'm not sure really if somebody could get a license under state law to, um, to do treatment, like. The definition of an alternative treatment office is a place of business that offers non-traditional healthcare services such as acupuncture, aromatherapy, homeopathy, herbology, holistic and massage therapy practices. Well, herbology, I don't know, marijuana is a, is an herb, but I guess, but I don't know if it really was intended to be included under that category. And home-based healthcare service is kinda, it's kinda what this individual's looking to do, but to also grow, grow her own marijuana. Mercantile, we have home-based merchants, and we also have, um, medical marijuana dispensaries and retail marijuana stores. Retail marijuana stores are prohibited in Bucksport. Medical marijuana dispensaries are allowed just in a very small area of town that's in the downtown, downtown shoreline and C-one districts. So the question that I couldn't answer is, well, if you have a home-based merchant, they're selling products out of their home, could they also sell medical marijuana? And do we want to allow medical marijuana to be sold from a dwelling versus a storefront? That would be a medical marijuana dispensary, which is, by definition, is a store that provides medical marijuana and related products to the public.
Which is only allowed in what district?
In the downtown district, downtown shoreline district, and C-one district. And there's a note, H-seven, that limits in the downtown and downtown shoreline to street-level, uh, commercial and non-commercial spaces that are fronting on Main Street. So the side streets off Main Street are in the downtown district, but you could not operate a medical marijuana dispensary on any side street in Bucksport. So that's a question I, I couldn't answer, uh, can you, can, under a home-based merchant occupancy, could you include the sale of medical marijuana?
I would say no, based on the product of sale.
It's not clear though, in the definition for home-based merchant, that that particular type of product could not be sold.
Why is that? Because of the herbology?
No, because of the definition of home-based merchant. It, it's a very basic, general definition that prefers just the merchandise, or merchandise could be just about anything.
Although that's broad, though, the marijuana, for marijuana specifically states that it needs to be on, in those three districts, so it becomes the product.
If it's a medical marijuana dispensary, but a home-based merchant that is selling medical marijuana is a different land use category, because it's taking place in a dwelling rather than a storefront.
Right.
So the, the question I had is, do we want to allow that? And if we don't, that probably should be straightened out in the ordinance, that we're not allowing medical marijuana to be sold out of a dwelling. Under the home-based merchant land use category.
Since we're open for discussion and our mayor's here tonight, Mr. Mayor, do you have an opinion on this? Or any information that would aid in this discussion?
I don't have any information that we've discussed at the council level.
Yeah.
Um. Personally, I don't see the difference in the two. You know, if we're gonna sell it at a storefront, or somebody's gonna sell it as a home-based product, I don't see where there should be an issue with that.
Okay. My thought is the security end of it, if you have someone, just that's right for an open discussion, if you have a, if a medical marijuana or dispensary in town has a business. Business, the chances of security, people around, so on and so forth, are, are gonna be around, and it's gonna be a lot more of a secure facility. If you have a home-based medical marijuana or dispensary.
We have, we have home-based jewelers, we have home-based other things where, you know, there's a, there's a high chance that.
That those could get legalized as well, they could be initially, I agree with that, I just see the, I just see the subject being controversial and. Being a much harder, sort of more difficult security issue. If we were to allow it in homes, is what I'm getting there. Both would be so much more spread out.
Legalizing adults to have it if they want it, I think might actually reduce that possibility a little bit. And you don't have, where it was illegal, you'd have to go find it someplace. But now you can go inside and grow it on your deck.
But we, but we have, but we have not discussed it, this is a, for, for this change. But you're right, it'll be a discussion.
Yeah. Thank you.
Jim Morris in East Bucksport. My, my daughter and my son-in-law have a medical marijuana dispensary on the island. They, uh, are under real, real tight scrutiny. There is, uh, cameras that run twenty-four hours a day. Uh, their growing operation has to be secluded so that it can't be seen or accessed by the public. Most of which is inside, they have some that they grow outside, but most is inside. They have been inspected by, uh, the state one time because there was a complaint about, uh. Someone said something about one of their plants wasn't secured enough, it could be seen or something, so they, but the, uh, home-based, uh, situations are no different actually than having a, a storefront situation. It, it puts it away, but there's also the, the, uh, the fact that they gotta be so far from, uh, students, or, I mean, uh, daycares, or any place for their schools or anything like that. And it's, you know, a lot of the daycares in the town, it's kinda hard to find a place that you ain't within those parameters, you know? But as far as I'm concerned, you know, she, they're doing a good business over there, I don't know why we need to put one in Bucksport.
That, that kinda brings up another point, too, is what would it do for the town? Would it benefit the town? Would it give us, would it do anything for us? Would it give us any money, or would it create, or would allowing those types of things create more of a drain on any resources that we have? Is it a good thing for us to have or not? How much money is in weed, Jeff? You got an answer for that?
No, I know. It looks precarious on that area. So, I mean, this is just for discussion purposes, by the way, but, but, um, so when I, I was asked the question, can I sell medical marijuana from my home? Uh, and when I. And when I looked at the ordinance, I just couldn't get a clear answer in the ordinance. So that's why I'm bringing this to you for some input, to see which direction you think we should go. Should we clarify that medical marijuana should be allowed to be sold out of a home-based business? Or not allowed in a home-based business?
I, I know we've had people come to our meetings, and I think town council meetings, some young air folks who are pretty adamantly in favor of increasing their, their ability to produce.
Can we, can we find out what our bordering towns are allowing? Arlington, Orland, Verona? Actually, even reach out a little bit further as far as Belfast, Ellsworth, can we see what, what they allow?
Yeah, Verona Island and Orland and Orin... Well, Origin might have a land use ordinance, but I don't think Verona Island or Orland have any land use regulations that would impact that type of business activity. Probably Ellsworth does, Bangor Brewery offshore, but I could, I could check around to see.
Yeah, that would be good. You could just get a little more information about what everybody else is doing.
The next question that I was asked, can I grow medical marijuana to sell out of my home? And when I looked at the ordinance, I found home-based production is a type of a home business that allows you to make something in your home to sell. And we also have retail marijuana products manufacturing facilities, which is a use that's not allowed anywhere in Bucksport. So that's, the, the definition of a home-based production business just didn't fit very well to growing something. It's more on manufacturing, or assembling, or constructing, or fabricating. All the words that are used here to describe the production activity don't, don't work well for a product you makes out of something you've grown. So that's why I couldn't fit it very well there.
If somebody has a farm stand on their property selling, you know, in the summertime, do they have to have any type of, or is that covered under what we did with seasonal sales?
Seasonal, seasonal roadside sales is the activity you're describing here. But under the rural category, rural land uses, we have something called homestead agriculture, which is a land use that, it's intended mainly for growing plants or animals for your own use, but if you have excess, you can sell them to the public. I don't think that land use was intended to apply to medical marijuana, but again, it's, it's not clear. And we have, under the same category, medical marijuana growing facilities and retail marijuana cultivation facilities, which that one is not allowed anywhere in Bucksport. But the medical marijuana growing facilities are allowed in a couple of areas, which are in the C-three, which is our industrial park, and in the Route fifteen residential commercial district. If you allow that under home, home-based production business or homestead agriculture, it can take place pretty much throughout the town. So I couldn't find a good answer to that question. Can I grow medical marijuana from my home to sell?
Does this person, does this person have a hub in mind, or they just wanna move to town?
They, they weren't descriptive to where they were looking, but they were interested in coming into Bucksport and purchasing a home and conducting that type of business.
Much money they wanna spend.
Easy.
Right.
I mean, so this is, are we gonna be driven out of someplace else because of this, or...
A little too vague.
The last area that I looked at was a trade land use. We have home-based trades. And in that category, we have retail marijuana testing facilities. That's not allowed anywhere in Bucksport. But would it fall under another category? Once the state starts licensing that activity, could it theoretically be called a home-based trade business?
What about apple orchards or strawberry farms?
Sorry, what was the question?
Apple orchards or strawberry farms, are, are those applicable? About what category would those fall under?
If, if somebody was gonna start one, you mean? Yeah, that's an agri, that's a commercial agriculture business. I don't think I, I didn't include that in the table here, right? But that's, yeah, if you're starting, like, like the Christmas tree farm, for example, that was a startup business and it fell under commercial agriculture. So I also included, I, I copied this several pages about medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana from MMA's website, just for your educational information. If you were interested in reading more about it, about how the state is treating these right now, where things are heading in terms of licensing and...
Yeah, that's probably good information.
There's an article in the news, like, just recently, where they're making some, the state and towns are making so much money off of marijuana cultivation and sales that the money now is, I mean, it was millions of dollars that are going into the school system to upgrade their school system.
Right.
Ain't this state?
That's why I said, let's hit it for us.
Well, you know, it's a crop. Back when we were discussing it, you know, six, eight, nine months ago. I mean, you know, I mean, I've never, I tried it once when I was probably twenty, and I'm not a huge advocate of it, but it's a crop. And it's gonna, someone's gonna make, well, there's already people making a lot of money, and I'm... You know, what's it to me that maybe we're putting ourselves out of an opportunity to make some money in town? How they do it, probably through taxation, obviously, and licenses and that type of thing. It's gotta be a legal way, but it's...
The state's about two years behind in figuring out how to regulate it and control it after they made it legal. So we jump on that bandwagon, letting everybody do whatever it is they're gonna do. We gotta find a way to control it.
Well, we ain't gonna let anything really happen until we do have a handle on the control.
Well, it's happening, it's out there, it's just, it's... I know people that have houses, ten-room houses, that they're all sleeping in one room, and every other house is a grow room. You know, the, the electric meter's got a fan on it because it's running, so...
You saw that house?
So at this point, I'm not prepared to issue a permit for a home-based business that includes the growing and selling of medical marijuana. If you think that we should allow that activity, give me some direction, and I can come back with a proposed amendment to the ordinance. But it's just not clear enough right now. For one thing, the permit, the permits I issue don't include any of but a notification. So you could, you could have a home-based business pop up in a neighborhood that's selling medical marijuana, and that'd be upsetting to neighbors. So...
I don't think we need any proposed amendments at this point. Maybe just a little bit of information on what surrounding communities are dealing with.
And I, I think this discussion could go on for months.
I, I would certainly like to review what Jeff just gave us. Very much so.
We didn't have all those tables that he went through in this packet, but...
Everything I'm showing on the screen, you have?
I don't think so. The last few tables, I don't think.
Oh, what, what I did is I, I, I edited out all the land uses that weren't applicable to our discussion, so... I'm showing more on the screen than what you have.
Right. Any other discussion? What's that, Joe?
The little microphones are still on.
Yes, they are.
Motion for adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?